Okay, we'll call to order the May 12th regular meeting of the Huron Board of Education. I ask Mr. Christopherson to please note the roll call. And at this time, would everybody please rise, face the flag, and join in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hey, thanks, everyone. First item is the adoption of the agenda. Most recent agendas are before you all. A few changes to highlight, a few new hires to the district, a couple more resignations, one more memorandum of understanding in the consent agenda, some celebrate successes in the district, and one new item in new business. With those changes, I entertain a motion to adopt the agenda.
So moved.
I moved and seconded to adopt the agenda. Those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, the agenda's adopted. Moving into dates to remember, May 14th is baccalaureate at 8:00 PM in the Huron Arena. May 18th is graduation, 2:00 PM in the Huron Arena. May 22nd through June 6th, ESL Summer School, excluding May 26th for Memorial Day. May 27th through August 1st will be grab-and-go meals. These are free for children ages 1 through 18. Tuesday and Friday pickups at the middle school. And you may sign up through school nutrition office. May 27th is a Tuesday, that'll be the next Board of Education meeting here in the IPC at 5:30. Those would be our dates to remember. We've had nobody asked to submit community input for items not on the agenda. We also have no conflict disclosure and consideration of waivers, so we'll move to our consent agenda. The superintendent recommends approval of the following. Approval and/or correction of minutes of previous meetings. Approval and/or corrections of the financial report. Consideration and approval of the bills. We have eight new hires to our district that require Board approval to be covered by a workman's compensation plan. We have several resignations for Board approval. Brittany Newharth, a AAA parent at the business office, two years' service. Say Too, a sped parent at the middle school with one year's service. Aubrey Erdman, sped parent at McKinley Learning Center with one year's service. She Saw Pa, sped parent at McKinley Learning Center, revised date of April 30th of this year. Kelly Palmquist, a sped parent at Washington 405 Center with five years' service. Kaitlin Konchak, sped parent at Buchanan K-1 Center, one year's service. Megan McFarland, speech-language pathology at McKinley, three years of service. And Ann Fenske, administrative assistant with transportation with a revised date of June 19th. We have one contract for Board approval. Jill Nythart, for law and public safety teacher, one class per semester at the CTE Center. We have one open enrollment request, OE 2025-05 for Board approval. We have a memorandum of understanding between Huron High School and PDK Educators Rising to approve. We have a few grant applications for Board approval. Lindsay Hudson and Carrie Hinker are applying for a late bus United Way grant in the amount of $6,000 to help with transportation for after-school activities and homework help room. Tabitha Unruh of the high school music department is applying for a $5,000 United Way Heartland Region grant to refurbish the Steinway Grand Piano. Tabitha Unruh is also applying for a $5,000 Northwestern Energy grant to refurbish the Steinway Grand Piano. And we have to approve a memorandum of understanding between the Huron School District and Big Language Solutions LLC. That would be our consent agenda in its entirety. Can pass it with one motion, or if any Board member would like to pull an item out for further discussion, they may certainly do so.
Move to approve consent as presented?
Second. I moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda as presented. Is there any discussion? Okay, seeing none, we'll vote. Those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries. This time, I'll turn it to Dr. Steinhoff so he can celebrate the successes in our district.
Thank you, Chairman Van Berkom. Good evening, everyone. Congratulations to Kylie, a parent at McKinley and Colton Pell on the birth of their daughter, Naveya Grace, born March 13th. Congratulations to the Employees of the Year, as announced at the Employee Recognition Banquet, held Wednesday, May 7th. Classified were Ginger Break and Rod Whitty. Professional support staff was Taylor Staley and finalist Sarah Blue and Tisha Harvey. Elementary teacher was Krista Corko and finalist Lynn Soward and Tori Harmon. Middle school teacher was Amanda Katzenberger and finalist Tammy Barnes and Brittany McLanahan. High school teacher Mitch Gaffer with finalist Lindsay Elves and Wade Stoppes. Congratulations and best wishes to the 2025 retirees. Charlie Warner, Janet Schindling, Ann Fenske, Nancy Kemp, Lisa Schneider, Ginger Break, Vicky Davis, Gerald Swenson, Craig Jones, and Mitch Gaffer. Congratulations to 8th grader Aku Shi for breaking the 200-meter hurdle, which was a record set by Na So of 38.17 seconds in 2024. Aku set the record at 33 seconds at the track meet in Huron on May 1. Congratulations to sophomore Jeremy Hofer for breaking the school record in javelin at the pier meet. He threw 156 feet, 8 inches. And congratulations to junior Hilton Hines for breaking her old record in the javelin at the Brookings meet with a throw of 119 feet, 9 inches. Thank you to speech pathologists and observants of Speech Pathologist Day, which was on May 8th. Thank you to the Yeldas Shriners and the High School Symphonic Band for visiting Buchanan K-1 Center on Friendly Friday. Thank you to Jake Lindgren of Edward Jones for donating 100 t-shirts to students for Mental Health Awareness Month. Thank you to Molly Perry and the cast and crew of Clue for two fantastic performances. Thank you to the vendors and students for a successful Fourth Annual Business and Career Fair. Thank you to Greater Huron for sponsoring the vendor lunch. Thank you to the JAG student volunteers. Those in attendance included 79 vendors and approximately 925 students from six different school districts. Thank you to Tabitha Unruh and all POPS participants for two nights of great performances. Thank you to the Dryer family, Harmon family, and Cronin family for their donation of instruments to the 5th grade band at the Washington 405 Center. Thank you to Taco John's, Godfather's Pizza, Dakota Revisions, and Modern Woodman for donations made to feed the future for negative meal balances. And last but not least, thank you to the following businesses for providing specialty items during Teacher Appreciation Week. Taco John's offered free lunch. Black Thai offered specials, including free tan and discounts on spray tan and retail products. Auto Body Clinic gave baskets of goodies. And Walmart provided sweet treats and fresh fruit. And that concludes the celebrations this evening in the district.
Thank you, Dr. Steinhoff. We'll move into Board reports. Our first presenter is already up at the podium, Mrs. Knechny.
Good evening. Thank you for having me. Some exciting news about our ESL program. We explored the idea of renaming the ESL department several years ago, and we circled back to the idea within the last couple of months. As language and education evolve, we want a name that better reflects our learners' strengths, diversity, and identities, and the work that the teachers do to support them. Sioux Falls and Rapid use the term "English learners," as well as the South Dakota Department of Education, their website refers to the learners as "English learners." So, beginning next fiscal year, we'll start making the transition to "English learners." So, instead of ESL. So, we're very excited for that opportunity. 15 years ago, in 2010, the ESL department, now EL, had 297 students with 25 first-year-in-the-country students. This year, as of April 30th, we had 1,012 students and 44 first-year-in-the-country. First-year-in-the-country was a little bit lower this year. Last year was just astronomically high at 123. We have lost a few ESL students. Our number was 1,029 last year. But a lot of that, those were migrant students as well that move with their parents for agricultural positions. So, the layout of where are these students, these 1,012 students? We have 195 students at Buchanan, 89 in kindergarten, and 106 in first grade. We have 218 at Madison with 105 in second and 113 in third. Washington has 174, 85 and 89 respectively. Middle school has 199. 6th grade has 79. 7th grade has 66. And 8th grade has 53. The high school has 193, ranging from 66 freshmen, 41 sophomores, 40 juniors, and 46 seniors. And then Huron Colony has 16, and Riverside Colony has 18. On May 6th, we got the ACCESS result, which is the test that the EL students take in order to gauge their proficiency and their growth. And in order to do that, out of a total of six points, they have to score at least a five on the test. If they score a four and are in the grades of ELA testing, for the SDE LA, they can be proficient on the ELA test and score a four on the ACCESS. Combined with those two, we had 68 students exit the EL program. Last year, we had 64, and the year before, 66. So, we had about the same number of students exit from ACCESS as with the state testing plus ACCESS combined. So, it was a great, great testing year, and we're really proud of the teachers and the students and all of the hard work that they've put in this year to show that growth. So, that ends my report, unless there are any questions.
You know, when I got my agenda, I just thought it was a typo there and it was missing the S. And it's good to know that, yeah, it was correct.
It'll take quite a few changes in some policies, just the naming, but starting to find all of those, and we'll update all of that, so.
It's good news. Any other questions or comments from anyone? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Great report. Now, we will turn to Mr. Christopherson for his business manager's report.
Okay, the first thing I have tonight is a general fund report. 83% of this fiscal year is now completed. We've collected $21,223,000 or 76% of the budgeted revenue, compared to $20,388,000 or 77% for the same period last year. To date, we have expanded $21,253,000 or 76% of the budget. Last year, at this time, we'd spent $20,576,000, also 76% of that budget. We have a construction update this evening. The first item is the high school addition. The work on the addition of the high school has progressed with the installation of the steel that holds the precast concrete walls together and supports the roof, roof drains, and underground oil interceptor, and the underground electric are all being completed. Some of the next things you'll see is the roof installation, demo of the fax room inside the high school, which should have started today, and asbestos abatement that should take place before our next meeting. Scoreboards in the arena are installed. We are working on Tiger Stadium next. When school's out, the middle school boiler installation should begin, if it hasn't already. The middle school roof replacement will begin as soon as they have the new roof on the new addition to the high school. Then they're heading over to the middle school. When they're through with the middle school, they'll head back over to the old part of the high school and do that roof replacement. We've got the fax room renovation starting now, and the music rooms and the kitchen will begin when school's done. So, getting ready to speed up with the construction.
Great. Any questions for Mr. Christopherson? Thank you, Kelly. We'll turn now to Dr. Steinhoff for his superintendent's report.
Thank you again, Mr. Chairman. Next Tuesday, the 20th, will be the final day of school. Huron School District encountered countless successes, multiple challenges, and several heartbreaks this year. However, the staff and students persevered and lived the HSD vision of respect, pride, and excellence for all. And looking ahead, for those of you that are counting, we have 101 days until school starts this fall. So, that concludes my report.
We have no snow days this year.
Correct.
Thank you, sir. I probably just did. You're right, I should have kept my mouth shut. Any questions or comments for our superintendent? Okay, then we will move into old business. Our first item of old business is second reading and approval of the Bus Conduct Matrix. We have the current and proposed in our board packets. They coincide with Strategic Plan Initiative 4, Growth and Development, and also Number 5, Learning Environment. I don't believe there's been any changes since our last meeting, so I would entertain a motion to approve the Bus Conduct Matrix. So moved.
Second.
I moved and seconded to approve the Bus Conduct Matrix. Is there discussion? Questions or comments? Okay, seeing none, we will vote. Those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries. Now, we'll move into next item, Policy IIIAA Textbook Selection and Adoption. It was introduced at the last meeting. It's on here now for a first reading. Coincides with Strategic Plan Initiative Number 1, Student Achievement. Any comments or questions from anyone? Because it will be on our next agenda for a second reading and final approval. Okay, next item, Policy IIIAA-1, Textbook Selection and Adoption. It's also up for our first reading. Coincides with Strategic Plan Initiative 1, Student Achievement. There've been no changes to this since its introduction. So unless there's any comments or questions, this will be on our next agenda for final approval. Okay, final item of old business is to ratify the teacher negotiations. Goes along with Strategic Plan Initiative 4, Growth and Development Planning. So I would entertain a motion to ratify the teacher negotiations.
So moved.
I moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, we will vote. Those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries. Now, we will move into new business. Our first item of new business is the presentation of the proposed budget for 2025-2026 school year. We have Mr. Christopherson going up to the podium to present our budget for the next year.
All right. According to South Dakota state law, the first meeting of the school board in May is when the business manager is required to have a proposed budget ready. So, this is that meeting. Here's our proposed budget for 2025-2026. It'll start on July 1. This is an overview of all the funds that we have, our big one being the general fund. We expect to bring in $28,805,000 next year and spend about $28,920,000. So it's almost balanced. It's about $115,000 off, which is a real small percentage of that big of a number. Capital Outlay will bring in about almost $6 million in revenue, and we're budgeted to spend $16,761,000. The big discrepancy there are the capital outlay certificates that were issued during this fiscal year. The revenue was recognized this fiscal year, but most of the money will be spent after July 1. As you saw in my other report, that all the projects are getting rolling. Special Education's our second biggest fund. It'll bring in $7.7 million next year and spend all of it and maybe a little bit more, depending on our levels of staffing. We never quite are able to spend all of that budget because we can't hire the people that we need. The building budget is $3,000. That is the arena budget. That is the tax on tickets that are sold to enter an event in the arena. There's a 5% tax. It generates about $3,000 a year. We spend that and much more on maintenance of the arena. Elementary bond redemption, this goes back to our 2013 general obligation bond. As you recall, we refinanced all of that bond in 2017 and 2021, and then that became effective in 2024. We have a period of a few years here where we will spend $1.3 million per year paying it back. We had been paying $1.4 million paying it back, but we have about a five-year period where it's a little bit less. Then it'll go back up to $1.4 million per year. So, as we have more and more taxable value in the Huron School District, the tax burden per parcel gradually falls. It's less burden per parcel each year because there's more property to spread the tax over. Our food service fund is about $2.8 million. Enterprise Fund is the concession stands at the arena and Tiger Stadium. It's our driver's education program, and it's our small preschool operation at McKinley. So, the totals of all funds, we expect to bring in almost $47 million in revenue and spend almost $58 million of expenditures. The general fund is used to account for all financial resources, except those required to be accounted for in another fund. The general fund budget is based on need. Need is calculated based on enrollment in the district on the last Friday in September. Our enrollment on Friday, September 26, 2025, will be the basis for this budget, but we adopt the budget in June of 2025. So basically, we are guessing our enrollment will be to support this budget. So we use an estimated number. Our enrollment on September, the last Friday in September for 2024, was 3,082. That number had actually fallen to 3,002 by April 17th. So we're just going to base this budget based on 3,080 and hope we can have a count day equal to this year. According to our August 2023 enrollment study that we had done, we're supposed to grow 51 students in '25-'26. So we're optimistic that we will see some growth. There's a chart of our enrollment. It's grown steadily since 2005. According to our enrollment study, it should level off here in the next couple of years. There's the actual numbers that we've had every day on count day since 2009. In 2009, we were 2,104. This year, we were 3,082. And we're going to let that number serve as the basis for this budget. There is the calculation provided by the state that we have to go through to calculate what is our need in the general fund. It's based on enrollment, it's based on the number of LEP students we have. We plugged in 782 when we were building this budget. So that says, this formula says, we need 218 FTE teachers. Each teacher is based on a target teacher salary of $62,821. Then that has 29% added to it to cover the benefits for that teacher. And then we take that total number, which arrives at $17,696,000, and we get another 38.78% in overhead to do everything else. So our total need is $24,558,000. That number gets adjusted by how much property taxes we can collect locally. We think we can collect about $4.8 million in property taxes that are paid to the Beetle County Auditor and Treasurer, and then distributed to us monthly. So we have to take that number away from our need, and we have to take away local effort from our need. So now we're down to $18.9 million in state aid that'll be paid to us in equal monthly payments. So what is that other revenue that they take away from our need? It is utility taxes on rural electric and telephone. It's revenue in lieu of taxes. It's county apportionment, which is fines. It's bank franchise taxes, and it's wind farm taxes, which we don't have any of those. All this boils down to a per-student allocation. Now we're up to $7,500 per student. So each student that enrolls to the Huron School District brings us $7,500. Going to have to update this slide for next year, but I still have the S in ESL. We have risen up over 1,000 students, and we are holding pretty steady there. So what's new in the general fund this year? It's taking our money. Well, 87% of the general fund is salary and benefits. We expect another 10% to 12% increase in property and liability insurance. We're very close on getting that word. We're budgeted for $85,000. We've got an additional kindergarten teacher, an additional one-half CTE teacher. We've hired two, tried to hire two more teachers and not do contract overloads. I think we have hired those two teachers at the high school, so we don't have so many teachers with teaching and overloaded contract. We have some aviation instruction for CTE figured out. We're paying for part of the Huron School District Foundation Director, and we're adding 13,000 square feet onto the high school. It's going to take some more custodial coverage in one form or another. All those things are about $263,000. Utility costs just continue to rise. That's our electricity, natural gas, and water. I added $100,000 to the budget for this year, thinking we can make it. We ran out of money at the end of March. So we're putting another $75,000 in there, and that probably still is not going to cover So we have some additional revenue added into the budget also, from enrollment growth from what we had budgeted. We have CTE collaboration revenue from our neighboring school districts. We will have more scoreboard advertising revenue, and the revenue from the State Office of School and Public Lands increased substantially. That, according to them, is tied to interest rates, so if interest rates begin falling, that number might begin falling again. It's about $350,000 a year right now. There's what our fund balance is doing in the general fund. Fund balance is simply a calculation of how much money you have on hand at the end of June 30th, divided by how much money you spent that year, and what percent is that. Our fund balance increased substantially during the pandemic. Stimulus money and one-time money that came our way, and the school board chose to stand by and spend that money wisely over a course of time. That's why the fund balance has slowly fallen since that high point in 2021. There's those percentages I was talking about. We've ranged anywhere from 14% to 21% over the last 10 years. Right now, we're at a 14% at the end of last fiscal year. I'm optimistic that number won't change at the end of this year. We talked about 87% of the general fund being salaries and benefits. This is kind of a summary of where we're at with teacher compensation and statewide We've had state aid increases since 2021 that have amounted 22.65%. At that same timeframe, Huron School District teacher increases have been 30.35%. So, an additional 7.7% has gone to the teachers in the Huron School District, over and above what was required by law. The state also sets target teacher compensation. Compensation is not just salary, it's salary and benefits, so it's got the health insurance So it's got the health insurance, social security, Medicare, dental, life, all those things that are provided as benefits. South Dakota Retirement System, that's how we get to our teacher compensation number. The state this year has a target of 82,003 for Here and. Each school district has its own unique target. We are required to be at least 97% of our target. So at least we have to be at 79,543. We're at 83,032 is my projection. We won't know until the fiscal year is completed and we calculate that on every teacher. But we're about 3,489 of head of the minimum requirement as set by the state of South Dakota. My projection for the 25, 26 year is a 1.25% increase to this from state aid also passed on to the teachers, which raises our state target teacher compensation to 83,000 per teacher, meaning that raises our minimum to 80,537. That's 97% of our target. So we have to at least be at 80,537. I project we will be at 83,471, which will exceed the target almost 3,000. Moving on to the capital outlay fund. The capital outlay fund is another fund established by state law. It is for the acquisition of property, plant and equipment. Capital outlay budget is funded usually 100% by local tax dollars raised through local property taxes. Sometimes there's a federal grant. For example, S R 3 crept into the capital outlay fund, but that's all done now. We're allowed by state law to grow up to 3% plus new growth in capital outlay. The Here and School District grad valuation grew by 3% plus there is 1.1% of new growth. New growth is new construction in the district. So our capital outlay budget is 4.1% higher this year. Capital outlay fund is where you'll find our debt. Besides our general obligation bonds, this is where the debt is. So we're in debt since 2016 for the tennis courts and the turf. 680,000 per year. That'll be paid off in this, this budget. We did some secure entrances for the high school and middle school in 2019. That's 465,000 per year until 2038. We did our CTE expansion and refinanced some of the Madison Elementary Construction. That's 230,000 per year. That will end in 2032. So that will be the next one paid off. And then we have our 2024 high school expansion and district repairs, 850,000 per year, ending in 2045. So right now, we're in debt in capital outlay, 19,480,000. We have a small loan left in capital outlay when we retrofitted LED lighting across the district in 2014. That's set to be paid off also in this budget. So we will, we will make one more payment of 146,000 and we'll be done with that. Special education fund. This is our second biggest fund, about 7.7 million dollars. It's a fund established by state law to pay the cost of special education of all children in need of special or prolonged assistance who reside within the district. It is based on need, very similar to the general fund. Need is calculated based on the number of students with disabilities enrolled in the district on December 1. So we have a different count day for special education. We have about 542 students in the state recognized as our count number. And that's the basis for this budget. So you take your 542 students and you break them down into six categories of disabilities. And each category of disabilities has a different need associated with it. The categories can range from anywhere from 7,650 dollars per student all the way up to 37,039 dollars per student, depending on how that student is classified. When we plug all of our students into this formula, we have a need of 6,469,000. And again, that number is then reduced by how much money you raise locally through property tax. We raise about a million dollars for each half of property taxes. So our 6 million goes down to 4.3 million in state aid. There's the building fund that we talked about. It's only 3,000. It's the 5% tax on tickets sold in the here, to enter the Here and Arena. The bond redemption fund is the general obligation bond that was passed to finance the elementary construction in 2013. That was passed by a vote of the people, so that raised everybody's taxes a little bit. And this is where that's all accounted for. Since 2013, we've been able to refinance that into two different pieces. So we're still in debt, 16 million, but it's been broken into two different pieces. One piece will be paid off in 2032 and then the final payment will be in 2039. The taxes do not change, even though part of it, it gets paid off. When part of it gets paid off, that money goes towards making faster payments on the second half that needs to be paid off. Our food service fund gets about 25% of its money from people paying their lunch money. Gets about 75% from the federal government for free and reduced meals. We are over 65% with free and reduced meals in the Here and School District. There's a big dip in that chart due to the pandemic in 2020 when people, everyone was just free and they didn't require anyone to turn in an application for free or reduced meals. So we don't know really what our percent was in those years because everybody ate for free. But now that we require applications again, we're back up over 65%. We talked about the enterprise fund for the concessions and driver's education and the preschool. That'll raise about 255,000 with the most of it coming from the concession stands. And then the driver's education program costs about 50,000. We spread that out over the students at 400 each. And in theory, we don't make any money on driver's ad and we try not to lose any. Any questions on that?
On the capital outlay fund, we have two that are going to be paid off in this fiscal year coming. So does that money roll over as well?
Tennis and the turf, 680,000 per year will be paid off in this budget. And the other thing that will be paid off is that loan to the Governor's Office of Economic Development for 146,000. So that will free up almost 800,000.
So would that go in to pay off other stuff, like other capital outlay bonds?
Yeah. It frees up money in the capital outlay fund to be used for other things. That was, in theory, that offsets the capital outlay certificates that were issued in 2024. That should be enough to start making that payment. So we just have this one year here where we'll pay both.
Any other questions or comments for Kelly? Thank you for your hard work on this. I know it's a, it's a lot for your office to do, but you guys always get it done.
Thank you. The next steps then for the budget will be a budget hearing, the first meeting in June. And then we'll ask for final adoption at the second meeting in June.
Thank you, Kelly.
Thank you, Kelly.
Okay, next item of new business. We have South Dakota High School Activities Association 2025 Official Election Ballots. Now we'll take these one item at a time here. First one, for small group, Board of Education Representative, our superintendent and activities director recommend casting our vote, vote for Billy Clanton from the Harding County School District. So I would entertain a motion to cast our ballot for Billy Clanton.
So moved?
I moved to second. Is there any comments or discussion? Seeing none, we will vote. Those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries. Next item is the East River at Large Representative. I'm going to pull this up here. There they are. Oh, sorry, right in front of my face. Recommendation is to cast our vote for Ryan Rollinger of Harrisburg. So I would entertain a motion to cast our vote for Ryan Rollinger for the East River at Large Rep.
So moved?
I moved to second. Any questions? Okay, we'll vote then. Those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next is Division One Representative. Our A D is recommending we cast our vote for Jordan Bauer of Rapid City Central High School. So I'd entertain a motion to do so.
So moved?
I moved to second. Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll vote. Those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The Division Three Representative. Recommendation is to cast our ballot for Chad Allison from the Lenox High School School District. So I'd entertain a motion to cast our ballot for Chad Allison.
Second?
Moved to second. Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll vote. Those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hey, motion carries. Next is amendments to the Constitution and bylaws. We have an amendment number one from Chapter One, Part Four, Subsection E in the Scholastic and Academic Rule. We have amendment number two, A D D, Chapter One, Part Four, Subsection D, Scholastic Academic Rule. The current subsection D becomes subsection E and amend Chapters One, Part Four, Section Three. We have amendment number three, Chapter Two, Part One, Sections B and C. Amendment number four refers to Chapters Two, Part One, Section One and Subsections A and N. Amendment number five, Chapter Two, Part One, Subsection One, Subsections F and H. And we have all these changes in our board packet now. Recommendation is to cast a yes on all of these. So I'd entertain a motion to cast our yes vote on the amendments and bylaws.
So moved?
I moved to second. Is there any questions, comments? Okay, seeing none, we will vote then. Those in favor will say aye. Opposed? Hey, motion carries. That completes that portion of new business. We next need to have an executive session in accordance with South Dakota Codified Law 1-25-2, Subsections One, discussing qualification, competence, performance, character or fitness of any public officer or employee. And also subsection four, contract negotiations. So I'd entertain a motion to go into executive session for these two items.
So moved?
I moved to second. Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll vote then. Those in favor going into executive session, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we'll head into executive session in your office. And then there, when we come back, there will be one or two items of new business and we will be back in session at that time. and we will be back in session at that time.
Okay, we are back in session. We have two items of new business to act on. First item of new business is a leave of absence request from Brendan House, bed parent educator at Madison. I would ask for a motion to deny the leave of absence request.
So moved.
Seconded.
They're moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? See and none, we will vote. Those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Final item of new business is to act upon our resignation as of effective May 12th of 2025. I entertain a motion to approve the resignation.
So moved.
Seconded.
They're moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? See and none, we will vote. Those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hey, motion carries. This completes our agenda for this evening. Only thing left is a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Seconded.
They're moved and seconded to adjourn. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we adjourn. Thank you, everyone.